Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, so everyone had a chance to review the minutes from last month's meeting.
Most things will prove.
All in favor of approving last month's minutes? Aye. Anyone else? No?
I, I.
All right. Uh, moving on, reports, uh, chairman's report, so, um, we have the, the town pope posted the budget, uh, based on the numbers that were submitted for the departments. Uh, Billy, you should have a copy of that now. And, uh, everyone appears with a copy of it. Bethel's budget, so one thing that was backed out of here and we knew it was going to be backed out was the incentive money. So that is, that was backed out of it. If you take that out, um, Bethel got exactly what they asked for, 1.5% increase. So Bethel's budget moves forward in the, in the process the way it was. Uh, Stony Hill took a haircut on equipment and supplies, which had a fairly significant increase. Budget had a twenty, twenty-two thousand dollar increase budget there. Uh, so there was a haircut there. The net, net of that is still an 11.6% increase on the budget that moves forward to, uh, referendum. Uh, Rich, do you have any color on that? Obviously you sat in the, you sat in the meetings, um.
I would tell the board of finance cut it.
Okay, but I mean, you, you were, you were present when that happened or no?
No, no, no. The, the board of selectmen passed it down the way it was. Where did the board of selectmen take? No, the board of selectmen had taken some money out of the, uh, uh, year, the, uh.
Who come in the supplies they took out of, uh, it looks like they're in tandem here. Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance are in tandem, everything matches.
Yeah.
Rule was taken out. Um, I wanted to say like the fact that the Bethel budget went through so nicely and what was proposed was that that was a thought of competency and commission and that we did a great job and that we're really happy. So I think we can take that. The, uh, the Stony Hill budget, I think was aggressive to begin with, but I think the fact that it's still right now stands at eleven, eleven percent change is still a good, uh, a good indication and support from the departments. Any other commentary? Questions? That's all I have, my report.
It may is that what they are compared to what they were when Chief Holmberg and I were preparing them. We never thought we'd see two hundred thousand.
You got paid shillings back then, didn't you?
Paying blood.
All right, moving on. Uh, reports. Department chief reports. Bill, we'll start with you.
Hey. We, uh, we worked today on our, uh, reports based on our, uh, what we can get off of our new system. Tommy, maybe you can help me out with that a little.
Tom reported earlier outside of the meeting that it's a fantastic system and works well and everybody likes it. That's what he does.
Uh, thank you, I think I would. I'm sorry, Anthony, I'm sorry. Very, um, so I don't know, maybe you're appropriate. To have each, but I can get started on this, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like. The, uh, we're, we're still trying to, uh, iron out a couple of bumps in the road on this thing so far where, uh, and Kamal, I don't know what I've done regarding the, uh, the way that the fire calls are entered into the system. And it, uh, it's still combining both departments. It's, it's making it a little bit, a little bit difficult to break out which company goes on how many calls. So I think that what easiest thing I could do is I'm going to start with just mine because I go to the most calls. And what we saw total department incidents, and we're just going to talk about Bethel here. And this includes going to Stony Hill. All right, and I'll break that down. So here to think, we've done a hundred seventeen calls. I didn't add in the three calls too from last time when I was sat there on the house part. So hundred seventeen calls, of those hundred seventeen, eighty-three were Bethels, all right? Um, so, uh, you know, we're, we're doing a significant number of calls. So another way they break it down is they can, uh, break it down by each member is broken down by how many calls they go in their particular fire company. So in my case, you know, on a, uh, eighty-three calls, excuse me, seventy-three to eighty-three calls that I went on were Bethel, in Bethel. Ten of them were either mutual aid or other areas such as Stony Hill. Um, I'm going to correct that, I said seventy-three, the number is seven, sixty-two. So between sixty-two, um, and the one seventeen, I think Tommy can help me on that. That difference in those numbers indicate calls going to Stony Hill from Bethel and mutual aid calls. So you see that obviously it's difficult to break this down. Um, so I'm going to use myself as the example. I went to eighty-three of the calls. Total number of calls between the both were a hundred seventeen. I made seventy-one percent, um, seventy-three of them were in Bethel, um. Uh, the responses by personnel with their assigned station, it says sixty-two. That difference between the two, Tom, I think you got to help me on this one, were probably mutual aid calls, correct? Right, and then we did a lot of mutual aid this year so far. And then, uh, so I did eighty-five percent of my calls downtown and, uh, the, uh, that, that's about how, the best way we could break this down. I wish I could give you a better indication of how this is working. When Case comes back, she's going to hand this out to you, but I have it broken down by all the members who have responded. And, uh, Tommy, if you want to throw ice on the cake on that, I think now is probably a good time to do that.
Yeah, I, I wanted to use the screen here because, um, just you did a show with. On that Casey up there, she's sharing screens.
Ah. What could go wrong?
Share her screens.
Take a look, you should go over there.
You're sharing, oh, you have a look.
I get that look at home sometimes.
There you go. We, we have a second sheet here, it's a little bit simpler, but it's not truly depicted on the steel ball picture. But we can talk about that once Case hands it to my picture. Hello.
Yeah.
All right, so, yeah. So we're still working out the kinks, I mean, overall, I think, um, the fire incident reporting is a little easy to do. Um, again, the software combined the fire marshal software, the fire department, uh, instrumenting, so we still got a little thing to do on it, a little figuring out what's plus. But again, these are reports we can pull, this is, this is for the last month, this is January, February, just what the numbers I actually, this is live data. What's cool about this is we can't really see it, but these are fires, right? Uh, false alarms, so this is just for January, February, but again, I'll show you like static to work, but here you can actually say, all right, there's seven, there's twenty-seven false alarm calls, we can click on it. And then we can even see, you know, whether there's system malfunctions, you know, detector issues. You know, since we went to thirteen fires, where we can click on it here and we can actually see, you know, eleven were structured fires and that includes mutual aid by high-end professional fire. Vehicle fires, so we can actually look at this live and see, you know, break that out and see it a little bit easier. Um, and that's kind of what I did. Here, again, if I just had to see.
I just can't see that far.
So then what I did was, and again, I don't know what the commission wants, and I, I'm happy to do these once a month, but you can see them every month. But this is just taking all of January and February, so these are the overall calls, um, for January and February. And then I, basically we're using one enter number, right? So we're not reporting, the two fire companies are not reporting separately. Combined into one. So I still got to figure out by station, so if the call is in a certain district, right? It's in a Bethel district or the Stony Hill, there's two boxes on the incident reports where you put in the fire zone and the station. So they should finish, so these are going by that, basically whose district the call was in. The only thing here, it doesn't really say, did Stony Hill go to this, all these same calls, probably not. And I mean, for Stony Hill zone, did Bethel go to all those, right, for compliance calls, right? So things like CO alarms, MBAs, right, wires down, there's single apartment responses. So it's a little harder to pull that, so I got to figure out how to pull it where it's based on that station or that, that station. To kind of show that a little bit better. But this is, again, January, February, these are all the calls, they're going Bethel's district. So again, this isn't showing mutually, because that's a separate zone. Again, it's static, so I can't really go in with it. This is Stony Hills. Okay, yes, Bethel always had more calls than Stony Hill no matter what, so I think overall, though, I think the call volume this year has been a lot higher than it was.
It's a hundred seventeen.
Yeah, it's quite high. And these are all a mutual aid call, they went out mutual aid nine times. So at least we can kind of give you that each month to show you the call types, right? Um, so I think that's awesome, right, to be able to slice it between departments, I mean, that, that, you know, starts to talk about how many times everything's going out. Right, and then like the next level down is what's going out, right? And then you start to figure out where and where on apparatus.
I could do reports to tell you how many times each apparatus went out.
Yeah, that's.
I think that's what we're really looking for, is to justify, you know, apparatus replacement, how many times are they going out, you know?
Yeah, that's something different, um, we'll get to that. So then this is what, kind of what, um, the chief was showing you, so we can take, um, oh, this is different, this is how many app, people were on apparatus and in the station, so total response per incident, right? So for every incident, you can see how many people responded. And again, this is a combination of both departments, I think I could break it out where it's per department. Okay, because this will take, you know, this like, uh, obviously this building fire, right, there's fourteen for that one. What did they collapse that there was only seven, so again, that's probably a single apartment, those are dual departments, so we can break out how many people were on apparatus, there's, there was a million and one reports I can run for you. So it's, it's quite a deal, but I just want to show you some here. Um, and this is the one I think the chief showed you. So we can basically say, take each person and show you how many, for, for whatever period, one month at a time, we could do, how many calls they attended. So again, this is just January, February. So, yeah, we can even do apparatus, you know, how many times that apparatus responded, and things like that. And one other one that I just wanted to show you, just because, um, this was brought up in that ESCI report that we had done, that some people like in typical belt. Um, one of them was right about response timing, this is the NFPA seventeen twenty, which is the standard for response for volunteer fire departments. Right, it's not a law, it's not the code, it's just for us a recommendation or it's kind of what the national standard. Um, and they cited that in a report about response times and what, you know, where they should be. So really, our mention is kind of like a suburban area, so, you know, for structure fires, they're looking at minimum ten people responding. Um, with a response time of ten minutes, you know, eighty percent of the time. So again, the, the old software, the times weren't ever correct because of the way they came over from the CAD, so I think looking at the calls, the times now seem a lot more accurate. And again, I know we can kind of make data do what we want it to do. But generally speaking, um, so if you do it just for one hundred series, which are all fires, right, those thirteen structure fires or types of fires we got that started for any type of fire. When you run that report, the eight is percentile, right, eighty-four percent of the time, we had responses within ten minutes.
Tommy, what is that, the first struck out the door?
First, yeah, this is for the first arriving, first struck out the door, first arriving unit.
Okay, that wasn't necessarily true.
No, it's any, yeah, like this was A three, but if you look at the times, like injured three was right behind it, that was for a, a fire up on, uh, bail road. I think A three was coming back from the hospital, so they have to get there like a minute or two before the, the fire trucks. Um, and then you can take all apparatus, right, for all calls, so again, that one, right, it's a little lower because now we're looking at every piece of apparatus for every call, so seventy percent, but again, this could be for wires down, this could be going mutual aid, injured driving in twenty minutes from downtown to Brooklyn. So again, you know, there's a lot of different reporting we can do here with that, but I just wanted to show you, so at least you kind of see, you know, what's, what's here, um. But yeah, we're, we're still trying to work out the kinks, we're going to do a training with this company first do about reporting, they have a whole section on the reporting where we can actually, you know, learn a little, little bit more about how to do the reports, there's another ad hoc report we can create and customize ourselves and then save themself.
So you can just, they'll be sitting there in the background.
Yeah, and then they'll go and just go grab. People know how to do it, they can flip it and print them out and learn all of it. That's great.
I, in question, I'd like to expand on what Tom said, um, see, the percentages are pretty damn good, I think, eighty to ninety percent. That time factor, which Tommy didn't bring up, listen, we had, we had nights, night after night after night, single digits, bitter cold out, snow, rain, ice, et cetera, that has a tremendous impact on those response times. I don't care whether you're coming from the house or you're in the firehouse, you're going out on a wagon. It, you got to take your time going to these calls, and that's going to have a profound effect on that fifteen to twenties, we said that it looks like we're a little slow on that. Um, I think that it's reasonable to assume that the weather is a tremendous factor in the first two months of the year. We took a beat, I don't know, probably still taking a beat. And, uh, I'd like to expand on that, it in a little while, I think we'll get into the business, so. But other than that, I think Tommy did a great job putting this together. And he really gives us an implication, I hope the, the handouts that we just got, myself and Glenn put together today, will probably help, but you understand us a little bit more than that.
Thanks, great report. And, you know, we can get down to the apparatus level, that's going to be. So this is fantastic software, I can.
Yeah, it's, you know, it, it takes time, right? Takes time for the bar series to figure out how to use it. Yeah, I'm still figuring it out on the inspection side, but yeah, it's got a lot of, I think it has a lot of good uses and.
Perfect. And, and the whole reporting system is going to change anyway at the end of the year when they go to a whole news federally, maybe it won't change now, but there, it's going to be, we're going to have a dashboard, we're getting rid of the enters program, which is a theme of a national fire incident reporting system, and they're going to a thing called MIRIS, which they're going to get more in-depth reporting, it's going to report things like, did you vent, like when you put in a structure fire, did you vent the building, did you vent it vertically, did it make a difference in the fire growth? You know, when you rescued somebody, so it's going to be so much more detailed. It's all going to be a requirement.
Stats that'll start to guide you to what you should do.
Yeah, yeah, you get more, yeah, like, right now, there's no easy way to report that it was a lithium battery fire. There's nothing in the enters program, we get the investigation part that tells you it was a lithium battery. So they're going to have that information in there. Um, and then they're going to supposedly have a dashboard where you can get a login and you can go there yourself and you can see the dashboard for your town and every, all the different data stuff, so. That is supposed to happen in October, right, mostly. It's going to change again.
And I, I like to put more than control, some of the programs I tend to over the years, and some of the, uh, states north of here, like Vermont, New Hampshire, are, are very, 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 um, in, involved in the response times because of their rural area. And what they determine is on a structure fire, and where you lay hose out, they say from the time it dispatches to the time you actually get water on the fire, that you have to use the, uh, term of about a thousand feet every ten minutes. So I use today's fire, we put two hundred, fifteen hundred feet hose down on the ground. So technically that would be about fifteen minutes, and that's about where we, where we were at. Um, so when you start looking at the time factor here, what apparatus is getting there, how long it's taking, all that has to enter the distance to get to the hydrant, hooking the hydrant and laying and getting the hose off, getting in the proper position. Um, it, it takes time, it's not something, and that's across the board, both career value, you know? So, uh, and also, it's not significant, evidently, uh, the time factors that we're spreading.
Any questions on the reporting? Or?
These time factors, though, they're from dispatch to time on scene, yeah. Yeah. Today, I'll give you an example, I went from my house to the firehouse, I told the, then first engine out of Bethel. We had a full, we had six people on the fire, six firefighters, and it was an automatic alarm. So we're going across town, it wasn't tall. I think it was halfway down Rockwell Road, where the first whacker from Stony Hill got there and confirmed heavy smoke in the building, retold we're in structure fire. Then out to Rockwell, Walnut, Reed Road, out to, uh, McNeil backed up, grabbed the hydrant in front of, uh, Maplewood, St. Edward Lee, all the way down to, uh, you know, three hours away on McNeil Road. It was a question as whether I could have come in the back way and hold on, I go, I looked at it afterwards, it was safe distance. So, you know, we probably saved driving time by grabbing the closest item that we came up on. It's supposed to have to go all the way around and come back in again. And when you look at that, I think if we pulled the times up as an example by your request, there was probably fifteen minutes. You know, um, and that's, that's accepted standard, where it's at. I don't care whether they're volunteer, there's that factor, they can, you know, response time, distance driving, hooking it up, laying the hose, et cetera, getting on the scene, it's, it's all over.
Any other questions?
This, this percentage handout you gave us here, but this is only fire calls.
I can't.
And this is only fire calls, right, generated from his programming, so when you see the percentages of members that make one percent or something, that's not including their ambulance call responses.
Pete, just a comment to that, right, that's what I was wanting to add. Keep in mind that, you know, the majority of the calls are during the daytime, the majority of people aren't around, yeah. Like, so when you guys start looking at numbers and percentages, right? We're going to argue whether it's. They, I mean, Tommy can do it. When you, when you start looking at percentages for accomplishing things, right? You got to really think about what's, what's in time frame when most people are around.
I think the percentage I was considering is that we wanted five percent for a tax abatement, I was looking at these numbers, I wanted everybody to understand that this is not realistic of their responses, this is just their fire response.
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah, I, I know where you're going, I'm just saying, but keep in mind, that probably safety to seventy percent are during the daytime.
The bar chart back coming out of the software would be super valuable to get a glimpse into.
So when you look at five percent, is it five percent of twenty-four hours a day? Is it five percent of the time when most people are around, what, what is, what is it? Because that makes a big difference in the resulting percentage, right?
Sure.
Right, I mean, if I can't make sixty percent of the calls, you ask me to make five percent, I'm really making thirty or forty percent of the calls when I'm around. Right, that's what I'm just trying to tell you, right? It's, it's a, it's a numbers game. I can, I like to verify what Chief, uh, Park said, he said fifty percent of your calls are daytime, whether it's Friday. Forty-five percent are weeknights, and forty-five percent are on the weekends, that's the across-the-board national. Yeah, I mean, and we see it here, here, so just when you guys talk about numbers, the chief, that, that, and it's always going to.
Say it out again, Bo.
You know, approximately, uh, it had been fifty percent of the calls are the daytime weekday calls.
And when you say daytime.
Six A, six B. Yeah, well, most people, approximately forty-five percent are weeknights and approximately forty-five percent are weekends. And it's been pretty steady for a long time now, it's approximate. Yeah, I mean, Tommy can get you to rip the numbers, but it's going to be.
Yeah, we can.
I feel it'll be higher, obviously, but they.
Tommy, on that reporting, can you, do you put in the kinds of the fire? Yeah, and there's a report where you can, it'll, again, it's not a pretty graphic report, but it's, it's basically each hour has each hour, each day of the week, and then it's booked in the total number of calls, so I, I have to, you know, download it as an Excel, and then you can run some formulas that show totals for each hour of the day and day of the week. And just looking at it, and I've done it in the old software, it's, yeah, personally, at least from fire calls. And very similar for EMS, it's, you know, six, seven, eight o'clock in the morning, and then personally for fire calls, it starts up again like twelve, and then three, four, five o'clock gets really high, and then it drops off in overnights, like for fire calls, like, nothing.
That's up to the real big ones.
Well, yeah. But that's, that's what ties into the criteria, so how much do you have to make to get that?
That's right.
Can we request, I, I don't know who's going to do the printing out of stuff like that, but if you can give us the graphs like you just did there?
Yeah, yeah.
And between you and Casey or somebody.
I might get some of the old software, run a report for like, you know, the last couple of years, because they have a similar report, I can show you, at least for fire calls, the, the trend, and I'll give you this, you know, what we have. Because again, this new software is just starting from game one, but the trend is the same. Thank you. And I think they can do it in the EMS software, and they can, they can do a report with, you know, time of day.
And it would be interesting to see what nobody did, however, we get the ambulance statistics.
Well, we tried some, but just, I was, I was just pulling up what I had from February.
By time of day?
Yeah, we have, uh, when we do the calls, we do the overnight. So I can give you an example, I'm sorry, backing up, we're trying to figure out who's on call, our staffing, so.
The EMS group.
Yeah, no, only EMS, only EMS.
Okay.
So our February report, which covers January, we got ninety-nine calls in Stony Hill. Uh, the paid crew covered fifty-four of those by themselves, that means that's the day curve. So that's a little more than half. And we had eleven on the weekends. Eleven more where we had one of our paid crew, because we only have one on the weekend. So, you know, when you're looking at that, less than half of our calls even have the possibility of having that volunteer.
And that's six A to sixteen.
Uh, yeah, that's the paid crew, six A to sixteen, two people on the weekdays, one on the weekend.
It's just like, you have to really, not as simple a saying as a thousand calls, you've got to be twenty percent, or ten percent, or five percent. It's not, it's, can't be so.
Well, the number's fairly low, five percent, and it's always said like, what is that, eighty-three calls? You don't think.
Yeah, but if you make eighty-three out of twenty percent of the total, then it's not, it's not five to second call. It's a lot different percentage.
But it's still just eighty-three calls.
I, I get it, but you got to understand from the perspective of, if there's only this many available calls, and you got to make five percent of the total, then the percentage of this thing is about fifty percent, right? You got to decide where, what responder type you want to reward. Billy's an anomaly, right, there's a few anomalies, of course, right? You know, there's, like in anything else, there's middle of the road, there's top of the road, there's lower of the road, right? You guys got to decide where you want to target the reward.
Sure, from the town perspective, it's, we, we want to incentivize people to go to, go to calls, right? Do not have a paid department, oh, that's where it goes.
Mr. Chairman, I think you're kind of drifting off point here, we're still in the chief's report.
We are, we're going to come back to that.
You got to come back to the tax management further down.
All right, anything else in your report, chief? Make a motion, we accept the chief's report as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So passed. All right, then can anyone speak to Stony Hill's chief's report? All right, we'll, we'll pass, we'll table that. Uh, on to unfinished business. Review of previous month's expenditures. Uh, if everyone had a chance to, anyone who might want to question those, have a chance to browse through?
I, I just, a quick question, if anybody can answer, what is Saint Pierre of C.O.? It's in both, it's both in both Bethel and Stony Hill. Bethel pays for it out of their equipment and supplies, and Stony Hill pays for it out of vehicle maintenance. Saint Pierre of C.O., there was a twelve-hundred-and-sixty-dollar charge to Bethel and it was seven hundred, seven-hundred-and-forty-one-dollar charge to Stony Hill.
Middle of December.
I would almost say.
I want to say it's something vehicle and making. That one's your mother, but I don't really remember. I usually, um, it's only, no, we, because any machine, we keep track of all our budgeting, quick and also just the, you can break it out category, so I've, I've been doing that for Doug, you're putting it in there each month, but.
Give me just one minute to look.
Yeah. That's true.
Your budget's middle of December.
Yeah, it was December sixteenth.
They haven't gotten there yet.
There are so many different Saint Pierre companies.
And then the only, I guess why you're looking that up, the only other question I had is, does Bethel not have any bills? Doesn't look like it paid very many bills in the last two and a half months.
Name of the bill was assigned to, uh, so I took it back from that end of the door. I went down, I worked with the control office over the past week and a half. And, uh, he gave it back to me, so can you find some more? And I did, and I re-submitted it. And he told me that by the end of the date that he would have updated story for that. So it's, it's, we, you know, print that out because, uh, they paid the bills on purpose. Left the checks. And he already had all the check stuff.
I mean, my only question is because I, it was back in either December or January, I brought up the idea of doing some type of purchase requisition for, for budgeting purposes and, you know, everybody says, well, no, that's gonna hold up paying the bills and we can't do it. This payment would get delayed so much. I mean, it looks like we're over, you know, sixty-plus days behind on some of this bill bag. I, I think, I think purchase requisitions, I still think that's a good idea.
During the time I made the credits, if you remember, I don't know if it's still standing. But they didn't pay, they only paid purchase orders once every four weeks or so. Some of you missed it. It was billed to them like an eight-week delay. Cause you can put it in, you know, right after they send them, then you had to automatically wait four weeks. That's why I stopped Google out there, because somebody got trouble with that.
No, I understand. I, I think if, if it's gonna be something we do or look into it, that's like, something that's fine-tuned from what we had years ago. But, I mean, you, Chief Homberg, I mean, we all remember doing purchase requisitions.
Yeah, and that's.
It just, I mean, looking at these, I mean, I, I see so many, so many things where you have like one vendor is being charged, you know, in one account from one department. But that same vendor for the same thing is being charged to a different account in the other department. Or even sometimes you have the same vendor for the same thing being charged to multiple accounts within the same budget. It's just very confusing. There, it doesn't seem to be any real accountability of any of the spending that goes on within the budget.
Well, we, we could, you know, start making copies of the bills. I, I, I probably gave him, probably gave him thirty, thirty-five. Thirty, that's it. And I have to apologize. At Saint Pierre, I thought it was something due to the contract or end goal. So I'll get that to you.
The other thing is, this will cost thirty thousand dollars for AAA. But all it says here is AAA. It's broken up. Doesn't tell us what it's for.
And I, I mean, that's something, a lot of those questions would be alleviated if you had purchase requisition. You would know what it was for. Cause it would have to get posted to that requisition. And that goes from July through February.
The other thing is, I don't know how they do this, their tracks, right? But we can, they can run a report, put in the bill exactly what each page was.
I, 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 I don't. I, I don't know. But I, I do know that several times I ask a question of, you know, what a certain thing is, and you, we never seem to have an answer, you know.
That's a copier. Yeah, that's what, that's what we thought.
Yes.
I see, I see Wells Fargo nine times on one page.
And they won't, we've asked to just have them pay them one time for the year, but cause it's a contract, so if you use more ink or more paper, they charge you more, but at least in Stony Hill, they've never used more ink or paper. So it's always the same every month, but they won't just pay it once. So the finance, they would send them a bill and then finance has to come and track once a month for.
Why? We have different vendors for departments for copiers? I thought the town had a, a townwide thing for.
Yes, Stony Hill I know is through base technologies.
I don't see base technologies on anybody's budget.
Well, yeah, they're the vendor, but then for whatever reasons.
It's a finance, you gotta ask finance. Base technology is technically, yeah, that work for that company.
Yeah, I, I know. I just, I, I just remembered that there was a town vendor for the, the copiers and whatnot. Now it seems like we have several ones for each department.
It'd seem like we would benefit from having a purchasing agent, view this stuff, these common items to, bring it into the fold, the town. Yeah, that takes the burden off of you guys having to go around and find quotes for everything too.
So they send a bill for each individual copier?
Yes, all the town buildings, yes.
Each individual machine gets its own bill.
I, I, well, I can't speak for here. I would assume so, but maybe not. I'm not, I don't know.
Four open for one month. Well, Spargo. Yeah, each, each machine gets its own.
It's very efficient.
Any further discussion or motions as a result of discussing the expenditure?
I, I do one thing. Chief Ingram, this is a report up two months ago. He talked about a threshold. Where you would suggest that if, uh, expenditure was above a certain threshold, that you would like to see, uh, multiple binges. Where did we end up going with that?
I don't think we went anywhere with it. It was just something we discussed. There was never a motion made on it or anything.
There was a threshold discussion also around any bills that were over whatever that number was showing up in this report. Come with the itemization. There was a discussion of thresholds with that. There was a discussion of, uh, invoice, when we, when bills showed up on the report as something that was paid, and if it was over a certain threshold. Just come with the details so we can ask and say what it is. Like, the Saint Pierre of wherever would have shown up. Yeah, hey, what is that? Truck chains? At least for Stony Hill, it was the truck chains for truck four.
Saint Pierre?
Some chains. There you go.
Keep in mind though, that's, and you guys know this, that a lot of stuff is single sourced.
Yeah, no, I was just curious what it is. I mean, you see, you see a vendor name, you don't recognize.
I'm not saying, I'm talking about the other topic. Over a certain amount of money, certainly going single source, you don't really have a choice.
Yep, understood.
You can squeeze them, that's what you wanna squeeze them, but one vendor is one vendor.
Any further action discussion on any, anything related to the expenditures? Now we'll move on to capital plans. Uh, everyone has a brightly colored copy of the capital plan. Stony Hill did go through the plan. Uh, I'll wait and hopefully Doug will be here to discuss in, in more detail. Uh, I'll always start with Bethels, which is not reflected on the sheet that was handed out. Handouts, sure.
What I did is I, I took the, uh, the graph that Doug put together, the photograph. And I tried to break it down a little bit, simply terms, and, uh, so we could, uh, we can get a feel for where we're going with this money. So, in the, the graph that Doug did, which was really nice, the bottom, you get the priorities based on colors. Up at the top, you saw the city, Bethel across the top, different years and a different proposed capital expenditures. So what I did was I made my own little list here to help me a little bit. Also, I think would give us a whole overview of the, where we're going with a lot of this capital expenditures. So again, starting in twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven, left end column is obviously the ten years that we're looking to do a, uh, capital plan here. And the first column is our turnout here. You can see that right now is, exclusive apparatus, that's our biggest expenditure. It's four-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand for ten years. But if you divided it by ten years, it's only forty-five thousand, six hundred. Turnout here is expensive, alright? There's no way we can get around that. The standards that are set now are strict and are gonna get strict. I spoke about that about six months ago. The second column is the cylinders. Not all years require cylinders. That's based on a fifteen-year lifespan. And so we're trying to fill in based on that master list. Uh, Chief Ingram, I gave you a while back, you know, with the expiration dates on our cylinders. And this obviously reflects those expiration dates. Next column is SCBA. Now, again, you can see that starting at twenty-seven, twenty-eight. But I saw here on the capital that, uh, it does not match with the one you handed out tonight. Which starts in twenty-six, twenty-seven. So just to get it.
That's a result of a discussion at the last meeting. I said, move it back by, start the spending earlier in Bethel than in Stony Hill. So that's why those three columns, those three.
Okay, we were taking into, and we were taking into account that, that the ones that were already ordered. Yeah. That we're hoping to get.
So we're gonna say we can make a change then, right there on this list. It'd be twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um, is the year we're gonna start with the sixty thousand, and we will delete the twenty-nine, thirty, sixty thousand. Okay, good. And you can see over that period of time, it's a hundred and eighty thousand. Um, moving on to the tires, tires are not cheap. Again, based on recommended lifespan, lifespan by DOT. Um, over the next ten years, we're cutting thirty-six thousand, one hundred of tires. I don't see that as being that bad. Um, we only have no choice anyway. But the ones that are still a little bit open here, and I made some proposals on, on possibility of expenditures here in the vehicles and equipment. But I'd like to spend the time on the, uh, on the vehicle. And I, I threw some of the ideas out to some people. But, uh, the tower is, it's got to be addressed. Um, so what I did was I took the years thirty, thirty-one, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-two, thirty-three. And broke down a two-point-four million expenditure on a ladder truck and put down three consecutive years of eight hundred thousand. By the year thirty, thirty-one, the chassis will be twenty-two years old and the ladder will be over fifty years of age. And, um, I didn't wanna see this. We didn't wanna see this go any further than that. Now, I could have wrote this down in, uh, you know, let's say six thousand, six hundred thousand dollar increments and maybe spread it out, but with respect to the different years and trying to keep the expenditures somewhat under control. Uh, the thirty, thirty-one seemed to be a year in which we would have a specification put together. And then obviously going to bid, and then the purchase, and then assuming that the timeframe for destruction is two and a half to three years. Between contract time and, and delivery time. Now, that may change. Four fighters, we don't know. Most people say, no, it's not going to, it's gonna remain what it is. It would be nice, and maybe, uh, Slapman can comment on that. If he would think that we could spread this out a little bit and make the pain a little bit less. Um, is a, if we talked last month, and Roford does this, the last I know, they put fifty thousand a year away, three point three companies. For apparatus purchases, and they basically about every, you know, eight or nine years is able to put it down, pay it down, or purchase a lesser value vehicle. And it seems to be working out pretty good up there. Two-point-four million is a, is a big nut to crack, and I understand that. But we don't really have a choice. The numbers on the age of this ladder truck is believable. Still runs good, it's solid as a rock, but fifty years is crazy. So we, we really have to jump on this as soon as we can. Now, in year twenty-eight, twenty-nine, the rescue will be twenty-five years of age. And the following year, the tanker will be twenty-five years of age. At our last meeting, uh, we, we agreed that they were in pretty decent shape now, that we could push them off for a couple of years. And, and we all generally agree that that's, that's acceptable. Um, hopefully, nothing will go wrong with that. But that third year, that thirty, thirty-one. We, we gotta look, we gotta do something with the ladder truck. I, I don't know what else.
I don't think you're gonna get any, any complaints about that or, or debate on it.
What's your idea?
No, I, I, I think going back to when we, we made the motion to purchase the ladder truck for Stony Hill. We made a motion to purchase a ladder truck for both departments at that time, with Stony Hill's being priority. So there's already a motion from the commission to, to purchase a ladder truck for Bethel. It's just a matter of when it gets done. It's, right now, it's in the Board of Finance, as to when.
But you just said it, uh, chief, it's just a matter of when it gets done.
But we've already made the motion to do it.
So the goal, the goal of this is to give the Board of Finance a forward look, right? Right. And I, I appreciate your suggestion of dividing it up into eight hundred, eight hundred, eight, you know, making it a chunk, little chunks. Let Brad figure that out. We just gotta tell Brad we need the money. He can figure out how he wants to spread that out, what he wants to do with it.
Never wanted to put money aside.
Every year.
But I think, I think confronted.
But maybe now, when it's costing two-point-four million dollars, maybe it'll look.
Right. And I hope, my, my goal with this is that if we can show them a ten or fifteen-year plan of what's gonna happen. It'll, it'll drive that thought. It'll drive like, hey, we gotta start reserving for this.
I just have a, a couple of questions going back, go back to the PPE for a minute. Are we moving the PPE out of the operating budgets? Cause right currently, I thought we had PPE in the operating budgets.
We did, and then last meeting, we talked about it in terms of moving to capital.
I must have fallen asleep at that point.
It was a long meeting.
Okay. Come out of the, uh, the equipment and supplies?
Well, my, my thought is I'll go to Brad with this and say, here, we moved it into capital, so you can see it. It's a recurring thing every year, capital. Dollar, dollar-wise, it makes the capital threshold. Do you wanna keep it here or we keep it in the expense? This year, it's in the expense. It's in the forward.
So, so the twenty-five, twenty-six, it's in the, their regular operating budget?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And then the other question I had on the, uh, on the cylinders and the SCBAs. Are we, are we taking into account SCBAs? Are we gonna order these SCBAs without bottles? Because we've already, we've accounted for the total volume of bottles that the department has in the bottle replacement program. Now, we account for that, and then we go and buy SC, complete SCBAs with bottles. We're gonna have, we're gonna have like three hundred bottles. We already have, I think, a hundred and thirty bottles.
I, I can address that, chief. The, uh, with the, the change in the standard, which, which they just can release, hopefully, I'll be in the FDIC in a couple of weeks, but they're gonna speak about the release things on the SCAS. They have to. Um, but without the bottle and, and including the mask on these new ones, they're gonna be around ten thousand each.
Alright, so, yeah, so I just wanna be clear. Are we buy, we're buying SCBAs without bottles? Because we've already accounted for our bottle allotment in the, in the ten-year plan with replacing the bottle.
I think it's reasonable to assume that, uh, yeah, ten thousand, we bought six of them. Would be the harness and the mask without the bottle, based on the breakout and so.
Okay, yeah, no, I just, yeah, I just wanna be clear. We're not, we're not gonna end up with three hundred bottles.
I, I'm.
I, I, I think we already have too many at a hundred and thirty.
Ten thousand based on what? The industry and the manufacturers, they are very apologetic over the fact that they have not released these slips out for, I don't know, four and a half years. Since, uh, pre-COVID. And, uh, there's a big push, uh, by consumers, the fire departments. They said, look, you know, you're the ones that chose the whole thought. You've been trying to put money away from them. You gotta be a little bit, uh, higginson of the needs of these fire departments, which can't afford a ten, twenty, thirty percent increase in price. Because they've been creating a way to pay them up with a reasonable cost at this stage. So, that being said, the discussions that I've been part of, that ten thousand dollars seems to be about where we're at with down on the bottom.
But bottles changing in this respect?
The bottles are probably one of them.
I know there's been a lot of discussion on changing pressures and anything else, maybe where they don't. We're talking about changing pressures from, from a private fight.
Yes. It's good, yes, of course.
I mean, so, I mean, when they come up with spec, right, it may, it may affect what you plan.
I don't know for. But she'd be talking about this last month at the meeting, or especially he was about the, uh, there isn't a thirty-year store for, uh, it's out there. there isn't a thirty-year cylinder that's out there now. It's part of that five-point-five or fifty-five hundred psi. And it weighs about a pound and a half, pound and three quarters more than the current half-hour bottle. If you go to the half-hour bottle, five bottle. So, and it also, uh, it's about a hundred fifty, hundred seventy-five dollars more for a bottle. So it'd be a lot.
Fifteen more years under it.
Yeah, I know it. But.
I, I, I think whatever, whatever we do, it needs to be the same for both departments. We can't, we can't have one department buying a fifteen-year bottle and another department buying a ten-year bottle. That just doesn't make sense. Same thing with the airbag. The airbag's gotta be configured the same in my, in my mind. Yeah, so I just wanted, I just wanted to clear that up that we're not, we're not double dipping that, you know, on bottles.
The only thing that I left open, Mr. Chairman, was the, uh, estimated refurbishment cost for the rescue tanker. I did not put a figure in there, because I don't have. Um, I did see one from several vendors, like, you know, we're two years out of us.
When you say refurbishment on those vehicles, what, what do you mean? Because I, I, I think your predecessor had a very different idea of what a refurbishment on those.
You know, bringing it up to a DOT standards with the lights, you know, striking, um, you know, may get to a point where you have rust. We have to address the rust in the certification. For one, the frame rails, uh, making sure that all the electrical is up to, to snuff, uh, things like that. That would be the limit of my refurb. That's just my idea. If it went past that, I have to look and replace them. I don't think it'd be costing effective.
So you're talking about fifty thousand dollar refurb or three hundred thousand dollars?
Probably about a hundred fifty thousand minimum, each, for each one. That's what we add in there, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
So are you indicating that those trucks do not currently meet the DOT standards with their lighting and striking?
They, because of the range, they, they're not being held to that standard. But, um, if you make any type of, uh, say reasonable change in it, you have to operate to the expense.
Once you touch it, you gotta bring it up to the curve.
Okay.
Once you touch the truck, you have to bring it up to the curve.
Pretty much, yeah. It is the threshold, how much you spend on it. If you go over that number, you have to bring it up.
So you favor rescue one, uh, tanker one, getting refurbs before you consider a ladder truck? Is this the way you have it spelled out now?
I, I'd love to put Ohana first in our beat.
I don't know why I wouldn't.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, listen.
I think that's the way we addressed it originally. As I said, we've already made the recommendation to replace the ladder truck.
No, but my, my only statement to that is that we have representation of Board's like in there. I'd like to hear what your opinion would be on that.
I, I'm all for going tomorrow for, you know, because it's gonna take so long to have the truck made. We don't have to pay for it until we receive it or, you know, start saving. You know, we're talking two, two and a half years to build the truck. You put the eight hundred thousand away each year, you, you got three quarters of it there before the truck's delivered.
I, I would, I'm one hundred percent favor moving that ladder up and pushing it to the end. I guess this.
So where do you wanna put it? Where would you put it?
I would, I would start in the twenty-eight, twenty-nine, uh, fiscal year.
You wanna wait that long?
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight's open.
Yeah.
I like the way you guys think. Alright.
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll make a motion. We put it start in the twenty-seven, twenty-second capital year.
Thank you.
What kind of dollar amount is this?
We talked about two-point-four.
You think two-point-four is gonna get it done in three years, you know?
It's definitely.
I think you're probably pretty darn close to two-point-four.
Yeah, so you're.
Yeah.
I think you're probably close, at least two-eight in three years.
Listen, um, government's, uh, job here is to, to work with the finances with the fire departments. You wanna raise it to two-point-eight, I, I don't see a problem with that. And if we bid it and it comes in less than that, I'll take this down. And the other good thing about this, and I, I think Chief Ingram and Chief Holber, who brought this up too, it's, um, uh, the, your ideas about making sure when we get new apparatus, got new airbags at. So this would coincide with the delivery of these new airbags as well. And that might reduce, you know, what we passed over as the initial clause. So we, we cover that, that base. We have five, six airbags on that apparatus when it comes in. Cause we include it in the, uh, SCB section of the capital plan. Saves a lot of money.
So Mr. Chairman, do you wanna use the number, uh, two-point-seven? Or do you wanna do like nine hundred thousand for each of those years?
I would do, I would put the whole number there and let Brad figure out how he's gonna spread it out.
Okay.
So.
But we have to explain to him that it's gonna take two, two and a half years to get the truck.
Right. So I was, I was suggesting we put the, uh, two-point-eight, Fred suggested. Uh, I was gonna suggest we put the whole thing in twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Yeah. I'll add that to my motion.
Can we, can we hold the motion until we get baldies in there, in their little slots? All the other trucks too? Alright, so now looking at rescue one and the tanker. You have rescue one refurb first as a, as opposed to the tanker. I'd suggest the tanker should go first, just based, based on age and severity of duty. Bigger, heavier your truck, lot more going on. Uh, but up to you guys. And then we gotta figure out where we drop it in.
I would, I would tend to disagree with that. I think rescue goes out more, it's a year older. I, that, that tanker probably only has eight thousand miles. I, I think pump hours are probably very minimal.
The rescue's a lot.
I, I can't see that tanker needing any work, you know, before thirty years. In my, my personal opinion, I, I, the rescue truck, I don't, I personally, I don't know about refurbishing the rescue truck. I, I question whether or not we've even, if we've outgrown that truck.
One of the things they talked about, I mean, this, this could be the reason, it has a compressor system, which we're, we're not gonna.
We haven't used it.
And the other thing is.
Stony Hill got rid of theirs.
Right. It has the hydraulics, which we're not using anymore. We have the e-drawers. Both of those areas reduce the required space or don't require additional space when you replace that apparatus. So we're, we don't have to worry about the cubic footage of spikes as we would ask, because those two big ticket items are out.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I question more the feasibility of, of a walk-in versus a walk-around. I mean, you know, when we originally bought that truck, you know, we were going on the premise that we're, we're gonna have a dive team and, you know, cold water rescue and you wanted to have a place to store all that and, and, and a place for people to change into dive suits and what. You know, since then, we don't have a dive team anymore and cold water rescue are few and far in between. And if you're doing those, I mean, I think you're, you're suiting up at the point of entry not in the truck, so. My personal opinion again, I, I, I question the feasibility of a walk-in versus a walk-around. I, I think, well, that would be a lot more beneficial.
I like to address that. I, I understand where you're coming from. But I think one of the big things that's happened, especially, uh, downtown, is we have some pretty challenging chemical uh, operations downtown. And I'll make reference to two. Eaton's is one and Vanderbilt's is the other. And the unknowns, or the portion we found out in recent structural files, that was a Shuckers warehouse. That's one point eight square feet, that one's flat. So what we did is, is you go into the back of rescue, you know, when you go to the front, that, that whole area in the front house, all it has is. And a lot of that has to do with the changes over the last few years in firefighter one, firefighter two programs. Which is now putting us at a higher level of participation. So when you bring in hazmat teams now, with the technicians, specialists level, what they require you to do is to have the decon level program in place for them. They don't come in and do the decon. They expect you to do it because it's covered in fire one and fire two. And I know why they're doing it. That's where all, all the input that comes from. Setting up that decon line, narrow the three-station decon. Um, and, and all related, the equipment that goes with that takes up a lot of space. The other aspect of having to walk in rescue it again, speaking of like brother sister firefighters, it gives you a cool place to go off in the summer, a warm place to go to. And it has all the shelving in there. It's kind of on top of the exterior. You don't even reach just so high on the outside box. And, uh, a lot of the, uh, roof rescue equipment is in there. Um, obviously, as you said earlier, the, uh, cold water rescue items. Um, some of the technical stuff is up in there, such as additional meters, the batteries, um, things like that, but on the inside, on. I've just, I, I always lean.
Yeah, I don't wanna sway you one way or the other. I, I was just, I was putting the, the thought out there.
It would still be up for the truck.
And the.
I'm sorry, you.
They would, they would still have a charter committee and they would still.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely. I just, I just wanted to float the idea of refurbishment versus replacement. I think we, I think we all agree that the tanker, you know, refurbishment at some point, but.
And then the one last thing I have now, the rescue truck, I think, yeah, I'm glad you brought it up, Fred, is that we have a two-man cab. On its commercial chest, but in the back, you know, we have the five SCBA seats in its back. Now, if we were to make that a single, uh, you know, an exterior box on that as opposed to a walk-through, we have to do something to address those five seats, which would mean an extended cab. You know, uh, we have to have at least four seats in the back, the officer, the driver in the front. That's gonna elongate the cab and it's also gonna have a considerable expense. So, uh, I just throw in those ideas after.
Alright, so any thoughts on what we wanna put where for the rescue truck in terms of the forward-looking plan?
Well, again, Mr. Chairman, I think we, we went into the three-year program. We started in, uh, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, unless they, they split it over three years, we'll have to see that issue. And the, uh, the last year would be thirty, thirty-one, rescue and, uh, thirty-one, thirty-two for the tanker. And, uh, but obviously then we'd be pushing it all up to, uh, that would be twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. Twenty-seven years on the rescue and, uh, twenty. Uh, twenty-seven years, twenty-eight years on the tanker.
I, I still think we can go even longer on the tanker.
Well, twenty-eight years, it might be knocking the dead door. So.
So in terms of a worst-case budget, why don't we, instead of refurb rescue, wanna put a replace? And that'll give us a number. At some point, we may come to this time, point in time and they're like, no money for that. You gotta refurb it. And that changes the decision a little bit.
Okay, so you're looking at, and you see one, two, three, thirty, thirty-one?
Thirty, thirty, thirty-one for replace.
That would make it, uh, five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. That would make it twenty-seven years old and that's reasonable.
Alright, what do we wanna spitball for a number for a rescue truck?
Not cheap. Replace that rescue truck, whether it depends on whether your commercial would cost them. They'd probably be looking at me at eight hundred thousand one point two, you know? And that's based on what I saw at the Long Island show.
Split in nine. Nine hundred and fifty thousand.
I'll take nine, I'll put nine fifty in. Tanker refurb? In thirty-one, thirty-two?
Correct.
Two hundred grand?
That's reasonable. Now, if it's what matters.
Alright, that covers, so we have squad, if you had a squad five refurb in thirty-five, thirty-six?
That would make, yeah, that would be the twentieth anniversary of that chest.
Then a refurb?
Or is that a replace? Refurb written in here.
Two hundred? Two fifty. Uh, I think that knows what it's gonna cost then.
Probably half a million at least. You should buy a whole fleet for these kind of numbers, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we're just basing six hundred thousand for a ladder for a refurb. And I think they're paying a year of three to, or three, four hundred thousand on engines. Yeah, at three fifty, I think we.
Alright.
That's what I would probably be using. On squad five. And then it would be a chief's car, and it'll be fifteen years old by then.
You have that in thirty-three, thirty-four.
Thank you.
Yep, okay. So we've covered all the vehicles, so.
Well, you wanna do something with the chief's car, no?
What's up? Who are you talking about? It's true.
I know, I'm not. That's what I said. I don't know, do you wanna? Wanna keep that at a hundred and twenty-five or do you wanna go higher? That's what you had. That's what I'm saying now. Yeah, so on the round. Can you get a count with it?
One fifty? And be careful, get these numbers too high, they're gonna issue you a bite, so.
Right.
Maybe. Um, and then engine six does not make this chart based on it's being a youngster. Alright, so with everyone's agreement, I'll make a motion covering all of these things we just said.
We should either withdraw the first one and then start again.
Rich, are you willing to read?
Yeah, I'll rescind the motion.
Okay. Alright, based on my notes, I will make a motion that, and I'll, I'll do them in order on this sheet. That rescue one gets slated for a replacement in twenty-thirty to twenty-thirty-one for nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Tanker one gets slated for a refurb in third, twenty-thirty-one to twenty-thirty-two, two hundred thousand dollars. Tower one is slated for a replacement, two-point-eight million dollars in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Squad five refurb for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the twenty-thirty-five, twenty-thirty-six year. The chief's vehicle replaced in twenty-thirty-three to twenty-thirty-four for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That covers it all. Any seconds on the motion?
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright. I will, we'll make that happen.
You'll make it happen?
Well, I mean.
Wow, you're powerful. You're gonna be chairman forever at that rate.
I'm not making any red steals.
You gotta, you gotta start, you gotta start planning. Has been put it off, put it off and put it off.
A little less. Two, two. We did five hundred and twenty-seven calls out most of here. We did nine mutual aid calls the first two months. For a good reason. Number one, people call us because we get out. Right? When we get out, we get out good people. We do good work when we get there. Everybody calls us, alright? This, this scanner, they're not calling anybody else. They're calling us. Nine there, I mean, that's, that's one a week in the first two months of the year. And we've got a couple already this month, so, um, and that's a fire, we're going to a fire.
Alright, there are three other items on your capital budget that do not have dollars associated with them. Uh, one is airbags in the twenty-six, twenty-seven year.
Yeah, that's, that was in the, uh, you know, the capital. They had the batteries, were they looking at sixty-five thousand, if I'm not, if I remember correctly?
Uh, for the hydraulic tools, you're looking at sixty-five thousand in twenty-eight, twenty-nine, which is where they were sitting. Hydraulic batteries did not have a number and.
Airbags. Batteries were sixty-five thousand, that's correct. Uh, in the prior, uh, capital plan for twenty-eight, twenty-eight or twenty-twenty-nine. No.
We have two separate lines here. We have rescue tools.
That's correct, there's nothing there.
For sixty-five thousand and battery replacement, which at the last meeting we discussed was about eight years. So we need batteries somewhere in your, in your plan. You have, uh, in what you've handwritten in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, you have batteries. For fifty-four hundred dollars. Oh, wow. I'm guessing fifty-four hundred dollars just based on Chief Evinuska's estimate of fifty-four.
How much? Fifty-four hundred, nine hundred dollars a piece. Nine hundred a piece.
Nine hundred a piece.
Six, how many, six?
Six. Six hundred fifty-four.
Fifty-four hundred.
So, and that would be in what year?
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight. I'm making a thousand. Yeah, yeah. And I had those in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And I think a thousand, one thousand, two years from now. Which is, is parallel what we had there in the prior capital plan. And the hydraulic rescue tools in the twenty eight, twenty nine. But, uh, know that. Prior to today, we, we saw these batteries, look, we take a three. Have recharge some batteries, seeing today, you know, I don't know where we're going by time wise, but. I'd say the, where we have these proposed here in twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty eight, twenty nine, I, I'd like to stay with that. These are reasonable, fifty four hundred for six batteries. Unless you feel that that might run it over to a regular plan.
Again, I'll, I'll meet with Brad on that because it could very well wind up in the, in the expense budget from suppliers or something like that. So I, I will meet on that. And, uh, but I'd much rather have it reflected here and have the information and take it off than to have to go back to the well and say, we need to add some.
And what year were you talking about the batteries?
Batteries in, uh,
Twenty seven, twenty eight.
Seventy seven, twenty eight. Two years. And the, uh, and then tools themselves in twenty eight, twenty nine. So we'll be looking at fifty, let's round that out, say fifty five hundred.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I can make a, uh, a suggestion moving to twenty six, twenty seven, because your capital's a little bit less.
We had the airbags in there.
And the airbags don't have a dollar value.
They don't have a number on it.
Those are, those are the things you made reference to.
Do we have a number on the airbags? And the year that they actually need to be replaced?
In twenty five thousand.
Stony Hill has airbags for twelve thousand dollars. Or two.
I know I was chief any last time we bought airbags, but I don't remember the year.
Well, no, I think we replaced every one that we have. Rescue, you know, we'd be around twenty five thousand, twenty thousand.
What year do they expire?
Can't go until they fall.
No, they actually have an expiration on them.
I believe it's ten years, ten years.
Like I said, I know I was the last one to buy them, but I don't recall the year.
So are you proposing we put the batteries in for twenty six, twenty seven, the airbags twenty seven, twenty eight? Is that what I heard originally?
Yeah.
I did say twenty seven. So move the batteries up till.
Sixteen.
Twenty six, twenty seven next year.
Nine years.
With the airbags into twenty seven, twenty eight.
I think you got to do, I think you got to do the airbags like this year or next year. I, if I bought them, it has, it has to be at least nine years ago. If I bought them my last year.
It's, I had them on next year.
I, I think they're, I think they're doing it next year.
Well, I'm putting it next year.
Either that, you got to take them out of service because if you had a failure, we're going to have a problem.
They had them in twenty six, twenty seven in the old capital plan.
Yeah, and that was, there was some question about that because it was.
Yeah, I, how often you replace ropes? I thought Chris did replace a lot of ropes.
Yeah, and as we talked about that, you see, move that out.
Move that out.
Yeah.
Yeah, we bought like thirty thousand dollars for the rope last year. All right. So, so we're going to do the airbags in this year?
Twenty six, twenty seven.
Twenty six, twenty seven. At, at what number?
You guys okay with thirty thousand on that just to be safe? Around.
Yeah.
Twenty eight, it's about twenty eight hundred a bag. So that would, ten, that would push right in there.
All right. And then you said you're taking the rope rescue out?
Well, we're going to move that. We bought a lot of the stuff. It was a remaining balance of, uh, expenditures on it, it was about forty five hundred. And, uh, I'm, I'm really hoping that it might have. For with everybody in this project to make that work.
All right. So. So there's thirty three thousand that's in here for twenty seven, twenty eight. What needs to happen with that?
After, I, I. I was told that the remaining cost was about forty five hundred based on what we already spent.
I think the times we dug into this, when we were struggling to figure out what it was.
Right, we did.
We figured out it was, it was part airbags, part ropes. We had no idea what it was. So the other option is we just take rope rescue off, the, the rope replacements off of here.
Right, do it out of.
Do it out of the equipment.
Yeah, for only talking forty five hundred dollars to sell your equipment supplies.
And then forty five hundred included, you're looking at hardware.
And then the question I have, I know Chief Homberg and I spoke, spoke very briefly about it. Is that the money for the mobile radios? Maybe Tommy can explain it best. I don't know. Why are we going to mobile radios? What's wrong with the radios we have in the trucks?
Oh, the eight hundred. Right. So the mobile radios, the ones in the apparatus.
Right. Why, I mean, what's wrong with the ones we have? Why do we have to change?
Twenty four years old. And if our whole communication system goes to a digital system, those radios are not compatible.
Not compatible.
They're not, they're, they're digitally compatible.
So if the police department changes, we have no choice.
Yeah.
Okay.
So either, am I? My thought is either goes in this budget or it gets added to what I believe the multimillion dollar upgrade of the whole radio system.
Well, I just, I wasn't aware that with the police department changing, that makes our radios enough.
Right, yeah. Those, I think they have two radios.
I don't know. I don't know if we don't map, we don't.
They're going to probably change the console when they change the console.
I mean.
So let's do it as one big.
It should have been done that way the last time. When I did the last, we should have been done that way.
I mean, I just, I mean, the radios aren't twenty four years old. We buy a new fire truck, we put a new radio.
Right. I don't know. The ones in Stony Hill, the ones in Stony. Those same ones that I've brought, when we brought them together.
And the radios get pulled out, go back in the next truck.
The one we put, the one we put in truck four? It's older than.
Uh, that seems. I guess that's why we need all of these airbags because we don't, we don't equip the trucks with new stuff.
The PD replaced all their mobiles in the last couple of years and they, the radios they put in there, I didn't feel capable so many. You just put it over and they'll be able to be programmed.
They didn't do that part of the one big radio plan. They just did those out of their current budgets.
I think it was like a part of a capital measure. It was somewhere or our, I don't know, but it was somewhere on it.
I'm just very confused on why to change. I mean, the radios we have.
Well, they just got the radios, but they're compatible to change over.
Correct.
I think they should propose a whole radio plan that somebody had.
Didn't you and I try the last time and didn't know?
I think the whole thing should come out of the emergency management budget.
Right, right.
It's like a two million dollar upgrade. So my suggestion is the.
It should be a capital expense for a whole thing.
Should come out in emergency dispatch, whatever's, whoever's.
Right. I mean, you put sixty thousand here, sixty thousand there and sixty thousand there and it just seems, it just seems counterproductive. That was my question, I guess, is. Why are we doing it? Just, are we doing it just because they're fancy and nifty and? Or are we doing it because our stuff is?
I think you can get on that style right now. I mean, GM side, some of the, some of the mutual aids already found the digital. The way we're getting around this, we got a handheld there, sitting on a charger. That's the only thing they talk to the town. So.
You can't just outbid it.
Yeah.
I'd say we leave it here with the caveat that it shouldn't be rolled into a budget somewhere else that covers the whole, the whole town communication. But we don't speak for it here.
And, and I mean, we already addressed the fact that, didn't we, that we put it in the same year for both fire departments?
Yes, we did.
We moved that already last.
That's right. Twenty eight, twenty nine.
Twenty seven, twenty eight, because we think the change is going to happen twenty eight, twenty nine and we'll be a year ahead. But we'll be asking a year ahead and we might get pushed.
Mr. Chairman, through the chair, today directly questioning to Fire Marshal.
You can just ask him directly.
Um. You know, obviously the police department are capable of doing a little bit of that now. We're, we're not. What about the rest of the town? What about the school system, the public works, all that? Today it will also be part of the digital system.
Public works probably will be too yet. Uh, as far as board of that, I don't know. So I don't know. I really don't know what, what's proposed or how far they are playing in that.
But it would be. We supposed to be so much like public works with digital stuff. So a town like. Line or something like probably be more appropriate. And just piecemeal it.
Yeah, right. The extra pages. Unless you keep them on the.
Doesn't have a conversation to have with the person.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it should, it should be handled out of town wide.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
With the whole plan, pagers, board, truck radios, the everyone's radio replacements, everything, everything. The console. Emergency corners.
All right. So from the notes I've taken on this, I'll make a motion on the last couple of items we just discussed. I'll make a motion in the Bethel Fire Department budget for twenty six, twenty seven. We had thirty thousand dollars for airbags. And I'll make a motion, we strike the rescue rope replacements completely. And then a motion, sitting tied to the same motion, hydraulic batteries for fifty five hundred in twenty seven, twenty eight. Discussion on the motion. Or second on the motion. All right, discussion on the motion. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
What is the dollar amount for the batteries?
Fifty five.
Fifty five hundred.
I can. All right. Moving on to Stony Hill. Um, so the handout is what was provided to me by Stony Hill. So it reflects all these different things. Uh, I do have one. Question, uh, on vehicles. Uh, and that is the engine three rescue two replacement. We have it, it's showing it's two separate vehicles right now. And we discussed a rescue bumper. I think that's probably a really good discussion to have here. You know, do we replace two vehicles?
I'm not opposed it, but I, I kind of think that the rescue is an added piece of equipment in Stony Hill to have with eighty four, with six. And having more of the high speed roads than, than downtown. I don't know how much opposed we are to get and replacing rescue two and. Engine three and possibly just eliminate and Bethel rescue at that point. And they're moving all their stuff into one truck. I don't know if that makes sense or if it's even an idea or even worth talking about.
Running these with a rescue bumper, you're not going to get a lot of equipment on the truck.
Right.
I mean, you're going to get bare bones.
Yeah, there's pressure, there's pressure now to get rid of engine three.
That's what's sent from us.
That's the problem is the pressure from the town side.
And getting rid of engine three, it was a proven fact that I, you realize at that part of. It's not, I don't even think it's an option.
But how many, how many engines did, how many engines were at that call today?
Oh, there was twenty, there was one. There was, it was a parade for it.
Right. So. If engine three wasn't there, there was another engine.
But it was there a lot faster than engine six was.
I, I don't know. I'm asking. I, I don't know. I don't have any batteries for my pager, so I didn't hear the call.
Yeah, engine three was first dude, truck four pulled up behind it. Engine one pulled alongside it. Was going to feed engine three if it needed. Engine six laid in, engine swab five was there, rescue two.
I just keep going back to the proposal that, that Chief Baker made, that, you know, that truck four was going to be your, your first two bumper. For nearly everything and. And, and it just. We've changed now, I guess. I, I, whatever. I, I don't disagree or agree one way or the other. I just.
And, and all that, we've, we're growing, uh, truck four is, it's all more of a training thing. You make sure that everybody's qualified on before we go and just send it out the, out the door first.
I don't think anyone's saying we do that now, but we're looking at the replacement plan three years from now. I would assume everybody is currently trained in three years.
I'm not, I'm not against combining both of them, but my issues is we were downgrading every time we talk, we talk about getting a new truck in Stony Hill. We're, we're automatically the one getting rid of trucks. And I don't know if everybody noticed, but our area is developing more than anything.
The only thing, the only thing we're running truck four first is it don't have a lot of water on it.
Oh, I know. It's, I'm not disagreeing.
It's not easy. It's not, it's not simple to lay a life with it. And you can do it. Right?
That's a quid.
I think the red flag was how it's sold to the town. Does it have the replacement to engine three or is it?
It wasn't, it wasn't sold as a replacement.
I wasn't hearing that point.
It was, it was sold to add to have a ladder in Stony Hill.
Because don't forget, we, I mean, we moved the truck away before that, right? Combine engine one and engine two with the one vehicle. Right? So we already downsized the fleet by a full truck. You can talk about pumps. That's a different conversation, right? Pumps aren't a distant truck, right? But we already downgraded, took engine one and engine two, combined them into, you know, engine. But the old engine one and the old engine two, combined it into engine two, engine one, right? As a pumper tanker. Right? So we, I mean, for the town's purpose, we did drop the fleet.
And, and we sold that on, on the fact that we're going mutually to, to Brookfield and they call for a, a pumper and a tanker. So we're, we'll buy this pumper tanker and only have to take one truck. But now when we go mutually to Brookfield, we're taking an engine and, and, and a rescue. So we're, we're doing the same thing we were doing before. When we sold this on the idea of getting this pumper tanker to eliminate, eliminate having to take two trucks.
But I think that's what they're at. Friend, I don't know, but that's what they're asking for.
Right.
Right. I mean, it's a conversation with Brookfield, but that's what they're asking.
That's what they want. They want, they want the rescue truck and they want the ladder from downtown. That's absolutely what they want. I spoke with Andy Yells. I spoke to Derek Tarmeyer. Now, is there a plan?
I'm not, I'm not trying to dispute anybody's plan and what anybody wants or whatever. Whatever. I'm just. And. The selectmen has mentioned it. The board of finances has mentioned it, you know? Why do we, why do we keep you so much apparatus? Do we have the personnel to staff the apparatus?
I mean, I mean, I don't want to make it so a knife bone conversation, right? You get the full size ladder with a lot of extra super feel. But depending upon how you design. Right? You talk about two different. Maybe you don't need those. Maybe you don't need three things right there. Right? Because if you get, depending on which ladder you buy, it's going to have a lot more compartments. Running out of a common rescue lap, like a lot of career. Right? Good. I think if you have to do some analysis on what's the best way to go with all these.
Right. And I, I think that was some of the thought in, in Stony Hill is, is perhaps get a rescue pumper instead of replacing engine three and the rescue truck. And you kind of split up your rescue between the ladder truck and the rescue pumper.
You've seen the ladder, right?
Yeah.
There's no, there's no.
And it's already been brought to my attention that you guys don't want that ladder truck on eighty four. So you're contradicting.
No one ever said that. But we, we thought that there's a better plan for blocking than that ladder truck. We should be using it.
I, I understand that.
Right? No, I don't think anyone ever said, no, don't bring it. But. You get a choice of a truck that's about to be retired and one that's one point eight million dollars and brand new.
We asked the two chiefs to come up with a unified SOP for lane blocking. Neither of you have done that yet.
When you go on eighty four, what do you bring?
You submitted your SOP, your department SOP. We asked that the two departments come up with a unified SOP. So that it's the same.
Just for block. Mr. Chairman, that, if I, if I may, I'd like to address Fred, what you said earlier. We need to clarify a little something about what happened to staff. All right. That call came as an automatic call. All right. And when engine three went out the door, they were going through an automatic call, right? So should we got there, thought, oh, we have. We were, if we went to the scene, we would have been in second. Chief asked you to stop and grab a hybrid. When I went to kid down weed road, the rescue seven went out the back, a ladder is coming out the front. And then followed immediately by engine one. Chief requested engine one get in, get a line into three. We stopped and hit the hybrid. The ladder went bias, the rescue went bias, et cetera. Now they, this is like bang, 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 bang. Sure, if this was. Or just structured fire, they had a driver for the ladder there, they would probably would have gotten it first, right? So question about what vehicles are going to get first, whatever. And it was engine three, then there were four pieces like immediately after that thing. Um, we're supposed to get it first. I, I think a lot of, we have to keep in mind the call that takes that. And today it's just the way the ball bounces. You know, we started with a lot of rock and soil, structure fire. And we did a lot of work to it. We stretched a lot of holders, played a lot of holders, et cetera. Um, so, you know, constantly saying how we agreed that the ladder was going to get it first, that ladder.
Um, so, you know, constantly saying how we agreed that the ladder was going to get it first, that ladder, I probably, you know, caused them to slow down a little bit, but I had a backup to grab that hybrid, get away from the tractor, stop throw around in it, and they went around. The situation dictates how it eventually got hit, and just for the record today, that's, that's the way it went. And in a, in a little case, we got a line into engine three, we got a line into the ladder, and people. So, um, and the problem we had, well, I think we're all for the collaboration, this organization, support the selectmen over the years, the train, it'll change.
Well, I think that's good, I mean, we're having the discussion, you're justifying the need, I think that's, that's what it implies, you'd be to justify the need. And we, I mean, we're looking at they just put like over a million dollars, you know, down on paper to replace, replace or refurbish apparatus down town. We just want to deal with justify, you know, the need for it. They're, I mean, they already made the motion back in January to, to maintain engine three at this point. Made that recommendation for selectmen. All right, we're just.
I think one way to play with this left is that we had these trucks years ago, we had half the building today, right? You know, fire was increasing dramatically. That's for five years. It's still going. Right? Got his plans for four story hotel against the highway. So, by the time, so it's not slowing down. We're making sure that it's not slowing down.
Do you get a call on highway? Fire or MVA? What apparatus goes?
Fire or MVA? Uh, the rescue for an MVA, an engine three blocked in, and the ambulance, and the ambulance, and then for a fire, engine one's a first thing out the door, and then engine three's behind me.
So you go up with it, you have something that puts a hose on the ground, people are working on a vehicle?
We have engine three going up with the rescue.
And then what's left in, in district for another call?
Uh, it would be right now, it would be engine one and truck four.
So to get rid of engine three, you have nothing left back. One piece.
What condition is engine three in right now?
Uh, engine three is in good shape, it's just getting old, but it's doing the same thing that we all are, getting old.
Is, is it possible to refurbish it?
Uh, it's, yeah, it's possible.
Rather than buy it and look.
Yeah.
Have to cost.
I mean, I think this all goes back to when we talked about the reports earlier, I mean, we saw these reports and we saw how often the structure will happen, and what kind of mileage they have on it, and you know, how many miles they're racking up, you know, monthly, annually, you know, it's, all of that makes it easier to justify its replacement.
I agree a hundred percent, my only caveat is it takes time to do it, right? You're asking everybody here on a volunteer basis to send, pop the computer and, and figure out how to write reports and fill out that work. And we can do it, but I'm just saying, you know what I mean? And I, I agree. And I, I can find the, maybe from the old, instead of the forty.
I, I, I'm just saying that it's very hard to justify spending two point eight billion dollars on a truck when you come in and say, oh, we need two point eight billion dollars for a truck because it's old. Okay, it's old. How many miles does it have on it? How many pump hours does it have on it? How many times did the ladder fly in the last, you know, year? You've got to be able to answer some of those questions. I mean, I don't think anybody here is saying that, you know, we shouldn't spend two point eight billion dollars on a ladder truck that's got a, a fifty-year-old ladder on it and, and the truck, the chassis itself is approaching twenty years, and I, I think we all, everybody in this room agrees on that, but we've got to be able to justify it to everybody out there.
And chief, you're absolutely right, I think we should be reporting that you're looking at, before it's our ladder, you know, how many forty's to do, you put a ladder, how many times, et cetera. But it's in down mutually or whatever. But I also went to the first light, but I said, if you want a lot more of this stuff done, and you can ask it, we reported. I said, I want, and even I thought about this, Fred, I need an administrative assistant, I want ten hours of waiting.
And I told you, John Mathie and I had that conversation fifteen years ago. You've got to put in your budget if you want it. Can't just say I want it, you've got to put in your budget. You got a budget, you got to come up with a dollar amount. Casey's not going to do it for free, you got to charge, she's going to charge you.
I'm trying to, trying to get a ladder truck in. So you don't ask.
But if, but if you want, you know, I, I'm sure Doug would say the same thing, he'd love to have an administrative assistant. You know, if the town hired a, a fire department administrative assistant, they could split it tight between the two departments, you know, for an extra amount of dollars, and, and you guys put it in in your budget, you know, whatever, fifteen thousand, you know, a year for you, fifteen thousand for you for a year, and you each get a part-time assistant, you know, whatever the dollar amount is, you know, I, I don't know, but you got to, if you don't budget for it, you don't get it.
There's more of that concept.
I would, I told you, I had this conversation with Chief Mathie many years ago. I love going to calls and running fires, I hated doing the big. I think if you ask Chief, he'll tell you the same thing.
I spend fifteen to twenty hours a week just to look at chief's.
Plus you're slow, that's.
Spend it easy.
I know exactly what you're saying, Chief did the same thing, so the chief won't.
It's just, it takes a lot of time. If the chief doesn't get anything, I'm not saying that for any of that.
Well, you get a car, you get gas to put in that car, that's.
What's your pleasure, Mr. Sherman? Uh, I was going to suggest that we look at those, we delete replacement dollars in, but I think the years are bad when you look at the overall budget. Right? In particular, twenty-seven, twenty-eight's bad, we just put a two point eight billion dollar ladder truck in there, so to ask for one point three billion dollars for another truck is problematic.
Stony Hill's rescue is probably going to be the most pressing need, right? And that's, that's the oldest piece of equipment in town right now.
When, when they inspect it, do they tell you if it's rust, the frame's rusting or anything like that? Uh, they would tell us, but there is no rust.
There is no. You know, can't, sure, we can't get a current assessment of the trucks. Sure, they always make it such.
Well, they have annual inspections, right?
Yeah, that's, that's where you get it.
Yeah, when, when you're.
They're all out there, they're all out there, ended a month, March.
We give them, and they're sold. They'll have them sold. There is out there somewhere, I don't remember where I saw it, but kind of an apparatus assessment that you can do, you know, like one through, on a scale of one through five, based on miles, you know, condition, et cetera, et cetera, that kind of helps your rate. But you get current, I saw that. And you can do that, create apparatus based on, you know, hours, pump hours, mileage, year.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we did, like you said, we did, we did that study and everything, which I found kind of disappointing, because basically it just laid out every piece of apparatus in town and said everything is due for replacement in fifteen years. I mean, we paid a lot of money for that study for somebody to tell us that you have to replace all your equipment, which is age fifteen.
Thanks.
Hey, Doug, I'm going to call and give a, a, a refurb price for engine three. We might just add, add that, right, to, instead of the one point two. But engine three had to refurb and move that one point two someplace else. Or, or we could leave the one point two in there to replace the rescue, do all of them in the same year if you want it.
That will go well, no problem.
I, I think whatever you do, we have to offset it on years that we're spending apparatus money downtown, and I think you can't, you can't spend apparatus money, I think, for both departments in the same fiscal year, I don't, I don't think that would ever fly.
So if we, if we look at this, if you left rescue two in twenty-six, twenty-seven, that gives an apparatus replacement in that year. The next year, we put the ladder truck in. The year after that, there's none. You know, so the bunches are, you know.
Could be a million from that two point eight.
Yes, but if you take the one point three or, or engine three refurb, and that out to twenty-nine, thirty, there's nothing in that year either.
Just keep in mind, right, and this is where we get stuck in this pain here, right? When you're heavy load with a capital plant with trucks in a five-year time period, get them repeated.
Right.
Right? That's why we always try to get this down for capital, so we can spread it out, right?
Yeah, that, that's, that's what we're trying to accomplish.
I know, I, I don't think, I'm saying, you buy five trucks within five years.
Yep. See him twenty-three years.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I see, I think that, that tanker, Bethel's tanker thirty-one, thirty-two, I still think that could be pushed off another, another year even, thirty-two, thirty-three. And then that frees up a couple of years between Bethel's rescue refurb and, and or rescue replacement and tanker.
Do you want to make a motion to slide that out?
I don't want to make a motion, I got told I need to make a motion.
No, no, you haven't done anything. I did, I got one.
I got one. All right, I'll, I'll make the motion that we, we slide Bethel's tanker refurbishing out one additional year to the fiscal year thirty-two, thirty, yeah, thirty-two, thirty-three.
Second. All in favor? I, I opposed. Motion passes. I would like to make the motion until we, pending further discussion and, and vehicle analysis and status of health, just to get, to get some placeholders in here. That we put a rescue two replacement for one point two million, we leave it in twenty-six, twenty-seven as it is. And for engine three, the replacement moves to twenty-nine, thirty.
That's still being one point three?
Yes. Second. Second. All in favor? I, I, opposed. Motion passes.
Can you give me those, Stacy?
With that, your tanker to
thirty, two, thirty, twenty, thirty-three.
And we moved Stony Hill's engine three to twenty-nine, thirty. And left their rescue at twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Yes. Yes, that's correct. Any further discussion? All right. That was good. Moving on to tax abatement, further discussion.
You want to do the mobile radio inspection from old radios and stuff? Or file? Um, and our first tools, batteries and stuff.
That process is all good, I'm a key driver, so.
I'd like to make a motion to mobile radios, we decide we're leaving in, right, the placeholder, and then it's the town.
Yeah, well, we don't believe we have to leave it in.
Yep. Our main items on this budget, we have an airbag lifting system for twelve thousand dollars in thirty-one, thirty-two. A hydraulic replace rescue tools in twenty-six, twenty-seven for sixty thousand. Hydraulic batteries, like a fifty-five to match what's, probably be more by the time it actually happens. Uh, fifty-five hundred pre-hydraulic batteries in twenty-nine, thirty. And there's a line item for forty-five thousand dollars for floor condition in one B six twenty, so. Make motion, we enter those into the budget. Any discussion? All in favor? I, I propose. All right. This is, I'll make another, another pretty color code a chart. All right.
Go back to the chase reports.
Yes, would you like to do your chase report?
Uh, we had a pretty easy month of thirty, I believe there was thirty-four calls for the month. Um, of all automatic alarms. We had a few structured fires last month. We went to Brookfield a couple of times to mutually aid again. Um, it's, it's, we, uh, we have no issues, no, uh, no, the kills. In the city a couple of times, too. Yeah, we, yeah, we, we were, they already covered, uh, engine twenty-fourish. At least two. To just chill out.
What'd you bring?
Twenty-three, thirty-three, thanks. It's your engine three. Uh, engine three is your primary, it was a station coverage. That's it, it's pretty normal.
All right. Any questions for the chief? Make motion when you accept the report. All in favor?
I. Any other questions on the finances and other, one question.
We figured out who it was, we, we didn't know who it was, probably figured it out.
Yeah, sort of, I was, I kind of guessed.
We just didn't recognize the vendor name.
Yeah, same here.
We was confused because it was, it was one vendor's name, was two hundred dollar amounts, and it was in, like, it was in your vehicle maintenance account, and it was in his firehouse maintenance account, and I was like, what is it?
Got it now, all right. Now back to tax payment? They take yours on tax payments? It's a cool business I had to work with, it just keeps coming up, it's hard to tell where, where to keep it.
I, I guess I'll start, because I brought this up, but I'm going to need to all the membership there. And, and a big concern with, with the membership in Stony Hill was that a large portion of our calls for ambulance and fire are during the day, where a lot of the guys aren't available to make the calls. So they feel they're not going to be able to make the five percent, which is the eighty calls or whatever. And actually, when I sat there and I literally looked on the list, they are a hundred percent right there. You, you're, you're far between there, they're going to be even closer to you, plus. When you look at it. So, which brought to me that, you know, we really should go back to maybe looking either at, um, staff hours, some kind of, somehow.
Did you have staffing hours?
That's a four to one.
Because every force, every force staffing hours would be one call.
Right.
I wish that was part of the recommendation.
I don't have to go to calls it. Or the big.
I'm sorry.
They're every day, they're three and four, one day a month for three to four hours. I mean, and without that, they can't do the other, right? So that's why it's a tough plan when you look at stuff, right? There's, it's a lot of things that have to happen to be able to go on a call.
Right, but you also don't want people to go to training to get their points, to not go on calls, right? So it's, it's, it's a balancing act.
It's a double edged sword all the way around, right? It's got to come at the right.
I, I, I mean, I, I can throw out a handful of names that I know, people, they go and say, oh god, the countless training hours would make very few calls, I mean, lucky, they'd be, you know, twenty, thirty calls a year.
But you're saying that the, from so far.
Whatever consideration was, five percent of the total call volume. For every four staffing hours would count as one call. Because you could potentially staff and not make a call, but you should, and not make a call, right? And we, and we recognize that, we value that, we value that you're available to make a call, should there be a call. The key is, is when, when Joe Smith picks up the phone and dials nine-one-one, he expects somebody to show up. And that's, that's when we have to report people, that's the feedback from, from the selectmen is. They don't care about parades and bake sales, and they care that somebody shows up when nine-one-one is dialed. Saying you have an emergency.
What's the number of calling you guys, I'd guess that's like two thousand?
I think with the numbers that Doc presented, call volume for last year, I think it worked out to five percent of the calls in Stony Hill would be like eighty-two calls. Based off, I think, I don't have my notes from last part, but, and Bethel's worked out to be like a hundred and seventy, something like that, yeah, one-twelve, I think was the number. I don't really think that's an unreasonable number, I mean, I, I just, I'm, I'm looking at the, the numbers that Chief McAllister presented, and it's seventy-three calls for downtown since the beginning of the year. And me, as someone that doesn't even make calls, or even really taking a ton of the calls, has already made ten. Or even really making a ton of calls, has already made ten.
Right, is it that? Right? By allocate since people said, to doing the daytime. Right? And then divide that by five. Five, eight, five, eight, eight. Calls, so at least six hundred and ninety calls. So it comes out to eleven and a half percent. Just, just, that's just the number, right? So your five percent is actually the people that are only think of a five and a half. So that's what I'm just trying to tell you guys.
Right, but Chief McAllister just pointed out that the national average was from six AM to six PM is fifty percent of your calls. And then the other fifty percent, twenty five percent, it was from six PM to six AM, and twenty five percent on weekends. So it's, it's fifty, it's actually fifty fifty. If you're going by, you know, the numbers, saying I'm not available during working, well, the other fifty percent of the time are not working. I mean, you said earlier, we, we can twist numbers around all we want to make them sound, we want to make them sound.
We, we started this conversation when it started at ten, and it went down five, trying to make it.
I don't, when I joined the department, we had to make twenty percent of the calls.
We asked our new members to make ten percent each month. We have departments that are, when they join, in the first year, you have to make twenty five percent of everything. So your black parts in your very strict pocket, pull people out of field, make that, it's no hardcore, but.
If you're getting.
Seventy percent, can I? What, I'm doing it now, that's all right, and keep up, it's kind of lost. As old age could do.
Well, but Chief's doing that, obviously, from my point of view. As a past EMS captain, right, so, uh, we're trying to push for staffing. So having the four hours count in the calls is, that's a big thing. He first told me what you're looking for, and you know that that's, that's a big hit.
Yeah, I mean, right now downtown, they count one staffing hours, one call, and that's just, I mean, because.
That was.
That was too high.
Well, when, when we were doing the point system, Stonehill was going the other way. Again, this is, I don't even know where the points came from, that was before I joined. But the point system was there, and for EMS, you had sixteen hours for a point. So it was the other way around. So it was two nights to get one, and this one, now you go one night to get two. Which I think is more realistic because, you know, he was telling me this after I went five weeks, did have a single call.
If you got a call, it'd be great. You did two, but you made one, and you did one.
But it was a big hit for me, and I, I'm to the point where my job, I can't hold the color work when I do this one night a week. And I was like, there's no way I'm gonna make this, but, you know, if you do it this way, I've already made it just as long as I can see my staff. So that's, it's reasonable, and we're trying to get people to staff one night a week.
And we're trying to. Right, that's gonna be an easy to administer plan, and the end of the rate, it can't be too complicated with all these different permutations, because no one will ever be able to figure out.
We still have a staffing support system, so you guys know the staffing system.
We, we, this is an ad, to try to, it was staffing, it was a big deal, too, is that if you come in and staff, um, you know, ten, fourteen. And that comes from the corporate side, that two pound side. So, uh. We have nights we have it up here for two groups. Now. Are you making sure? That's gonna work into, uh, our ability to get our Saturday night six, ten person off the staffing company and be covered by volunteers. It's expensive to hire a staff.
Yeah, I mean, and personally, if, if you want the tax abatement, the opportunity is there for you to get it, you just have to want it.
We're not saying you get thrown out. No, I'm, I'm, I'm just asking a question, what do you want it for? Right? Uh, I mean, the staffing part was brought back to your department, it would have been less.
Sure, yeah, yeah, I mean, a lot of people were like, there's no way we can, but this. Yeah, but that, that's gonna be a huge thing, and that's gonna help, especially for the people who we, we said, hey, we need you. We lead, there are a lot of people that only staff, I call maybe once a week. And if there's a call, the call, so that's the only calls for, that's the only time they're able to cover.
Right, so if they, if they staff twelve hours overnight.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That's, that's three calls.
I was a little questioning a little bit four hours at one point, it seems excessive, but I see the point of trying to encourage staffing so that you know there's somebody.
Right, this might even reduce your staffing needs, and you might, you might encourage people to staff, more people to staff, more hours, and, and.
We're gonna get people to staff weekly, and pretty time on weekends.
I think all of this stems from, is, the, the selectman was kind of frustrated with some turnout on some calls, and it's like. I have to be rewarding these people, and, and nobody showing up at six o'clock on a Sunday morning. Where, where is everybody at six o'clock on a Sunday morning?
Right, meanwhile, our push was, we want to increase the abate tax abatement.
Right.
Right, so those two things were going in the opposite direction.
Right, we're, we're trying to give you the benefit and.
Now, we'd be hurt that, when he brought it to me, and we're like, great, you're going up, but now you're getting possible.
Yeah, we're trying to get rid of that, you know, that tiered benefit, you know, hopefully we get the maximum.
But, uh, so just, aside from that part of it. My, my concern, my recommendation is, and I think we're building this, it's no longer on tax abatement. There, it's not based on your tax liability kind of number. So we have very young members, right, that make a lot of calls. And maybe they have an old pickup truck that has a hundred fifty dollar tax bill. So the way it works now, they could be eligible for five hundred dollars because they've been there for five years. But they're only getting a hundred and twenty five dollars.
And we discussed that a little bit, Tom, right, there's a general, Connecticut general statute that allows for the tax abatement.
Yeah.
So we want to address that first. If we realize that, you know, some of. Say you, you got a two hundred dollar pickup truck, that you're maximum liability, but you've made. The commitment, and you made the requirement to be eligible for two thousand. Wouldn't it get disapproved? And then we want to address it. The selectmen has suggested, uh, like, voyage accounts. Which is what, I guess, the town employees have, and contributing that way for those members that don't have the tax liability. We want to make up the difference, but we have, we gotta take care of A before we get to B.
Okay, well, I, well, what you're discussing, yeah, that's, it's part of them.
Okay, I, I think we.
Right now, you have two fire teams that don't even live in that whole head.
Right, and well, we addressed that too, we, we, we already addressed the out of towners.
Yeah, that's, right, that's.
Yeah, that, that's on the books, so we can, we can get that to work.
Because they get, if you throw too much all at once at the board of selectmen and the board of finance, they're gonna say, are you crazy? We're not giving you all that money, or, we're not gonna lose all that money in revenue.
Oh, I just want one of this.
We, yeah, we want, we want to be able to address it all, but we gotta do it incrementally.
And as representing the impact, it was, create a plan, then tell us how many people this applies.
Yeah, right.
So we told them, or the numbers we have are, how many it applies to. It doesn't say whether they actually have that liability or not, so, or live in town. It's just, here's a potential frontal impact, and we'll figure out how we.
And, and so that kind of makes that money available, because I think Chief presented a number of, like, they thought about twenty seven members each department would be eligible. At, at a two thousand dollar total abatement, well, if you only have a five hundred dollar liability, that leaves fifteen hundred dollars extra. So I mean, that, that's money that could get invested into those voyage accounts to make up the difference.
And it's, it's all a lot cheaper than hiring a paid driver.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That you'll still need every volunteer behind that paid driver.
Well, that's the problem.
Right?
You only have two, you'll live two, right? Here, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
When people ask me, what's a, you know, a paid department, a paid department here, if you want a paid department that you're gonna hear, you know, is twenty five people on a shift, right? I mean, that, because if you have three or four, you're still never involved.
I mean, I, I think I looked at it years ago, and it was like six million dollars to staff one engine.
And you're still being all involved, it's a combination department at that point.
Yeah, yeah, and that's a. One man engine for six million dollars. Yeah, absolutely.
Five, two, three, four. People over that together, but that's, they're all doing this.
All right, any further discussion? Any new business? Shudder to ask. Any public comment? I make a motion with you.
Thanks, Larry.
All favor?